At the end of the beat.
Well, it's seven o'clock, so I'd like to call this my council for Monday, January 3rd, to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bell.
Present.
Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen.
Present.
And Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
So before we, I guess before, since everybody continued, it doesn't make a lot of differences to the order, I'll go to the Pledge of Allegiance and then do the swearing in. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance followed by an omaha silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now have the swearing in of Jason Whalen by Court Commissioner Clint Johnson, and that will be followed by the swearing in of Mike Branstadter and Mary Moss by municipal court judge Lisa Mansfield. Out front. All right.
All right.
Jason, if you'll raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Jason Whalen.
I, Jason Whalen.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the laws of the city of Lakewood.
And the laws of the city of Lakewood.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
And to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, diligently, and impartially.
Truly, faithfully, diligently, and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of council member.
Perform the duties of the office of council member.
In and for the city of Lakewood.
In and for the city of Lakewood.
And Pierce County, Washington.
Pierce County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you, and I'll say thank you to Mr. Bryan.
My pleasure. Ms. Moss and Mr. Branstadter with Judge Lisa Mansfield.
Good evening. It's my honor to perform this special duty tonight, Councilmember Moss, Councilmember Branstadter. And if you will repeat after me, raise your right hand. I, Mary Moss.
I, Michael Branstadter.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the laws of the city of Lakewood.
And the laws of the city of Lakewood.
And will, to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
And to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, diligently, and impartially.
Truly, faithfully, diligently, and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of council member.
Perform the duties of the office of council member.
In and for the city of Lakewood.
In and for the city of Lakewood.
And Pierce County, Washington.
And Pierce County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now move to the nomination and election mayor and deputy mayor, and for this, I'd like to pass the gavel to the deputy mayor. It has to be recognized. The chair recognizes Mayor Anderson. Well, it's with great pleasure that it's my honor to nominate Jason Whalen to be the fifth mayor of the city of Lakewood. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any further nominations? If not, then we'll proceed to the vote. I pass it back to you. All those in favor of the illustrious Jason Whalen as mayor of the city of Lakewood, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. The chair recognizes Councilmember Anderson. We have moved to selection of the deputy mayor. Correct. Like to nominate Mary Moss. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that Mary Moss be nominated and selected as deputy mayor. Are there any further nominations? If not, all those in favor of Councilmember Moss, selection as deputy mayor for the city of Lakewood, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, deputy mayor. Well, I guess the floor is mine briefly, and I would just like to give each council member who was sworn in tonight and deputy mayor Moss a chance to say hello and thank you. I just want to start out by saying thanks to Commissioner Johnson for making tonight legal for me. It's always a good thing to have a little legality with lawyers involved, so thank you for coming. Sherilyn, thank you for being here. And I also want to express some thanks all around, and first to Don Anderson, our mayor, perhaps mayor emeritus. He's the longest-serving mayor here in the city of Lakewood, and Don, to coin a Navy phrase, has steered the ship magnificently over these past many years. He has kept us on the straight and narrow. He's kept us on course, and together we have accomplished many things, Don, over your tenure here as mayor and as a council member, and from a point of personal privilege as a friend, colleague, and partner for 21 years prior to that. So we have served together a long time, and I think. Also want to say thanks to my families here tonight. Thank you, Gail, and Claire, and Allison, and Olivia, if you're watching, from New York City. You guys have spent many a Monday night alone, and Allison has known nothing but dad at council meetings during her almost entire life, and so thank you for putting up with it. Thank you for missing me during all the episodes of Bachelor that I missed out on or other reality shows, so I just want to appreciate your support over the years. You know, and to my colleagues, Mary, it's been a great run, and Mike, we have served together now. It's our 12th year, and I look forward to certainly four more years together and along with our other council members, Mr. Bokey, and Ms. Farmer, and Ms. Bell, and Mr. Anderson. We have much work yet to be done. But I do want to reflect just briefly, and I want to say thanks to those in the audience, and also thanks to many of you who are attending on Zoom tonight as you're looking in. You know, it goes without saying that the four of us who started here and with Councilmember Anderson, five of us, 12-plus years ago, this was quite an auspicious occasion when I was selected and sworn in 12 years ago. I was the youngest council member at the time, and I was frankly the youngest council member for quite some time until I think Ms. Farmer and Ms. Bell came along, so thank you for taking up the mantle on that. I had much darker hair for 12 years ago, and I think it's changed a little over time. I try to ignore that. But at the time that we were sworn in 12 years ago, it was also one of the darkest hours that this city incurred and experienced. In November, just after our election, we suffered the loss of our four police officers, and I think for all of us who were here and experienced that at the time, it was an indelible memory and one that served, I think, to give us a lightning rod and direction as to how we were going to work together as a team and work with this community to do great things, and together we have done that. We attended the funeral, and we had some rough days during those early years, but I think this council rose to that and many challenges over the years, and we've experienced many great things together, and I think the proof of all of it to me over these 12 years, starting with that initial challenge, is that this job and this work is worth the effort. It's an opportunity for all of us here and all of you, we're just neighbors together, but it's a chance for us as ordinary people to work together to do extraordinary things. But it doesn't happen alone, and it doesn't happen without consensus building and teamwork. And so I just want to say thank you tonight for allowing me another four years on this great team and to be head of the team for at least two years, and to have a great time to work collaboratively, to build consensus, and to continue to move the ball forward. And as my friend to the right has often said, it is really about picking up more than you leave or put down, and making a life of significance is really this opportunity for me and for all of us here. So thank to you, the voters, for putting us in place, and I'm sure over the next four years you'll keep us in place and on our toes, and we appreciate that. So thank you again. And Ms. Moss, as deputy mayor, would like to say a few things, and then Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is my pleasure to serve as your deputy mayor. So I want to thank Judge Mansfield for deciding and making us legal one more time. I've been on the council, as you heard, 12 years. I've enjoyed every bit of it. I look forward to at least four more years. And to our former mayor, first I want to thank former mayor Anderson for his leadership. You've led us through some challenging times. We appreciate you, and I'm glad that you are going to stay on with us at least for a couple more years. So thank you for that. I, to my colleagues, thank you for the nomination and for your support. I'm excited to serve and work with you in this role as a deputy mayor, and I want to say that we are a strong team. We work well together, and I'm looking forward to more new growth and ideas in 2022. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I certainly want to express my thanks both to my wife and my family for putting up with the work that I've had to do and the time I've spent the past 12 years and for giving me the go-ahead to do for them, to be able to go and do that, and then the thanks to citizens from throughout Lakewood that supported my series of reelections that I'm looking forward to do, and I, the mayor's comments about when we first came on the council and were elected, and even before we took our oath as the office, dealt with the tragic death of the four police officers that we had, and that in viewed in me, and I'm sure in the other council members, the fact that the community needed to come together and that there needed some leadership to help it come together to be able to go and do that. And so, and it also struck me as that that wasn't going to be the only thing, so it made me feel that this role was going to be not just important, but it, but one that was going to be an opportunity to be impactful. I would say that in each of the three terms that I have finished, the most significant thing in each one of those was not something that was envisioned during the run-up to and the election that preceded it, in precede the financial problems of the years going on to do that and things of that, and I think that this next four years will be the same. That we may think we know what the challenges are as we head into those four years, but some, there's going to be some things that we're going to have to come together and work together with the community, with each other, to be able to move forward too. And I, I guess that I'd, I'd also like to express my thanks to the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney that have been here with us throughout all of the meetings and helping us to be able to go through and do that. You know, the city manager in particular, that one of the most important things that we as a council do is choose and select a city manager, and we've been really fortunate that Mr. Caulfield has made us look wise in that regard, in terms of being able to go and do that, and that is a decision that we made that has paid great dividends to the city. That city clerk is essential to our work to just keep us focused on what really is that we're supposed to be doing at each of our meetings and of making sure that all of our questions and our schedules are combined in a way that helps us be successful as council members. And the city attorney does her very best to try to keep us out of jail and some bankrupting the city, and we appreciate all of her guidance and most things to do that. Well, I'm looking forward to four more years. I'm looking forward to being a part of this team, to be able to go and do that, and I appreciate the fact that we're going, we can launch into that with the trust of the community that they've shown with us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Branstadter. Welcome to the four years. And at this stage of our proceeding tonight, we're going to take a brief recess so we can enjoy a cookie, maybe, and there may be some coffee back there at least to say hello to the friends and family members who are here, and then we'll reconvene in probably 10 minutes, and we'll have proclamations and presentations and proceed to public comment. So we will be in recess. Thank you. Yes?
Rhonda. Hi.
Anyways, all right.
Is Kimmy Ginn here? Okay. All right. Kimmy, Kimmy. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are back from recess. And we are reconvened here on our city council meeting for Monday, January 3rd, 2022. We turn to our proclamations and presentations section of tonight's meeting. And the first proclamation that we will issue is declaring January 17, 2022, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. And for this, I would call on Kimmy Ginn, the MLK Committee member, if she's available virtually. Kimmy, if you want to raise your hand or wave. Madam Clerk, do you see Ms. Ginn? And bear with us as we continue to work our way through Zoom meetings.
I'm coming. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Hello. Happy New Year, everyone in Lakewood. I'm up in Seattle tonight. Well, it looks like, actually doesn't look like I'm in Seattle because I'm trying to pretend I'm on the tropics. First of all, let me say to Don Anderson, thank you for your service. New Mayor Wayland, congratulations. Deputy Mayor Moss, congratulations. Exciting to see the new leadership taking fold and making Lakewood a better, better, better place. On behalf of the Martin Luther King Committee, it is my pleasure to be here this evening to accept the proclamation from the City of Lakewood. As always, this committee has worked diligently, collaboratively, in a way that truly reflects the spirit of Dr. Martin Luther King. And we're excited that this year's video is going to be better than last year's and it will be aired on January 15th. And all of you will be getting the link, as well as getting the link out to the community. But this year, we're just very, very excited that we can continue to do this virtually, even though COVID-19 is still denying us the opportunity to fellowship face to face. So on behalf of the Martin Luther King Committee, I accept the proclamation that I believe you're about ready to read to our public.
Well, I appreciate you being here and appreciate your spirit, Kimmy, and your leadership on the MLK Committee. And we know it's going to be a smashing success and look forward to the video this year. Next year, promise me it's going to be in person.
Oh, I hope so. I hope so. Counting on it. I hope we can get through all of this challenge of these various variants of the virus and we'll be able to really fellowship and really celebrate Dr. King in a way that he would be shining down on us. And this is the way we're supposed to do it.
Well, I agree with that. And it is my honor and pleasure, as my first proclamation, as the fifth mayor of the City of Lakewood, issue this on behalf of all of us here. Whereas Monday, January 17, 2022, is designated as a federal holiday, celebrating the birth of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who dedicated his life to the fundamental principles of freedom, opportunity, and equal justice to all. And whereas such recognition is a direct result of his many contributions to society through his deeds and words. And whereas through his march on Washington and the "I Have a Dream" speech, Dr. King reached a worldwide audience and was recognized by people from all walks of life as the conscience of an entire nation. And whereas all Americans are reminded that our nation recognizes that all men and women are created equal and should be judged not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. And whereas the City of Lakewood is committed to the ideals of a free society and is a community of great cultural diversity, which we value and celebrate. And we're dedicated to the fraternity and community of all people here in Lakewood. And whereas the City of Lakewood will again honor the distinguished legacy of Dr. King at its 19th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Ceremony, which will premiere virtually on Saturday, January 15, 2022. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims Monday, January 17, 2022, as the Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service here in the City of Lakewood, and we invite all residents to join us in this observance. Proclaim this third day of January 2022, Jason Wayland, Mayor. Thank you, Kimmy, for coming.
Thank you so much, Mayor Wayland. And again, congratulations and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you. Great to see you and enjoy the beach.
Yeah, it's all virtual, but it's, I'm working it. Take care, y'all. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, next, we have the Clover Park School District Report. We've been advised that the board member is unavailable for this evening. And just as the semester has started, there is little new news to report. So we'll skip to the public comment section of tonight's agenda. Please know that public comments are accepted by mail, email, in person, or by live virtual comment. Comments may be sent in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, here at 6,000 Main Street Southwest in Lakewood, or to her email address at bshumacher, S-C-H-U-M-A-C-H-E-R, at cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to all of us here on the city council electronically. The clerk will read the names of those who have submitted comments in writing in advance.
Mayor Wayland, we received comments in advance this evening from Judith Minetti and Helen Wagner.
Thank you very much. And I did receive and reviewed those comments. Members of the audience may comment on items relating to any matter related to city business under this public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Virtual comments, of course, are allowed in this hybrid world. If you would like to provide live virtual public comments, you will need to join our Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number listed on the screen with the meeting ID number listed as well, and press star nine to raise the virtual hand feature. And the clerk will assist me in calling on those who have so dialed in to provide live virtual public comment. Outside of public comments, attendees on Zoom will continue to have the ability to raise your virtual hand for the duration of the meeting. You'll not be acknowledged, but your microphone will remain muted except when you were called upon. So at this time, if you will let me know who is signed in to speak on our virtual sign-in log here. It appears Mr. Haugen is the first. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Haugen, you have the floor.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Dennis Haugen here from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Something caught my attention at the last meeting that you're clearing the third floor. What I have to say about that is, is that once the third floor is clear, you will experience a demand for that space. It's unlikely to be private parties. It's more likely to be the state. And for that, for that reason is, Inslee has put a, trying in his budget to get $800 million for homeless. The problem with that concept is, is that you can't separate who wants to be homeless and who wants a place to live. That'll be hard to straighten out. And which ones are illegal immigrants? You know, they're homeless. We know we've probably got a couple of million people that have come in since the Biden administration taken over. And they're hauling them places. And sooner or later, they're going to put a demand on housing and food and everything else. And everything is so convenient there. You have DSHS, you know, right next door. You got EBT cards next door. No control a lot of times on the EBT card. So you're buying drugs for homeless people. And of course, it'll try more to Lakewood in terms of homeless and whatnot. So I don't expect that space to stay empty. It was refreshing to hear the oath of office. Being, you know, there's many, many cities where mostly Democratic Party leaders, like mayors and senators and representatives, have been encouraging crime. And it is a crime to encourage people to do illegal things. But then just in the last couple of weeks, several elected officials in different cities have been attacked. They've had crimes committed against them. And always sudden, and when you compare what they said two years ago and what they say now, it's an awful sight. I mean, they're just literally almost crying like two-year-olds in diapers. But they're the ones that made the bad, bad decisions. They got them so much crime in the first place. And you should know what that is. Burning buildings, whatnot, defunding priests, you know, sanctuary cities, all that junk that they've been promoting. So anyway, it's good to talk to you. Oh, you want to list the really good governor? Governor Kristi Noem is doing her State of the State next Tuesday. It can do no harm in looking at how other people handle things. She's a very good decision maker, very articulate. I suggest you tune her in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haugen. Next, we have Matt, who has signed into talking. Again, please, even though you have a limited name profile on the attendee list here on Zoom, please give us your name and address of residence.
Okay. Good evening, if you can hear me. My name is Admith Kira. I, or you can call me Matt. I am a resident of the Tacoma-Lakewood border. I'm coming in this evening to seek you and welcome you, Mayor, as the new Mayor, Mayor Wayland. I'm also coming as a humble servant on the stolen land of the Palaps to talk to you this evening about the Gary Oaks and to ask you, once again, to put a moratorium on cutting down the trees, specifically the Gary Oaks. I'm calling, I'm calling in this evening to ask you to do a better job of reviewing the paperwork around the development site. When they say that there are no trees available on that site, there's no trees on that site, who is double-checking these facts? Like, what is going on? I don't think you can answer that right now. I'm just here to let you know that it is not business as usual. It is 2022. You have a moral imperative to protect the habitat that supports your city. And I am calling on you to go forward and put a moratorium on cutting down these trees until we can figure out a smarter way to develop a better habitat in Lakewood. I ask the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have, it looks like Dosare Farmakis.
Well, hello.
Hello.
Yes, my name is Dosare Farmakis, and I am from Pullman, Washington. And, you know, I got a couple of things, you know, I was going to talk about today. But I want to start by just, you know, echoing, echoing Matt's sentiment. We need to, you know, we need to protect the Gary Oaks and we need to make sure that that's being verified and that they aren't being cut down while we're trying to get this figured out, you know. There's a word, you know, people like to throw around words that they don't really understand. They like to use them incorrectly in political situations. I've been noticing this a lot, you know, anarchists, Marxists, those get thrown around a lot. So when I use a word, especially if it's a scary one, I like to give some context. I like to give a definition. So let me start by saying that according to a man named Benio Musolini, fascism should better be known as corporatism because it's the merger of state and corporate power. And what does this have to do with our situation? Well, what it has to do with the situation is that we have people, and we have people in Lakewood, and we have people throughout the country in the highest, in every, at every level of elected office, who are governing according to the will of corporations instead of according to the will of the people and according to the needs of the people. And that's why, that's why this administration drives with feet on protection of the Gary Oaks. That's why you're more willing to allow developers to go about it if they please. Because you are beholden to corporate interests, right? Now, I just want to say this. I also want to make this very clear. You can change the mayor. You can, you can, you can switch up, you know, who sits at the head of the table. And you can, you can declare a Martin Luther King Day holiday. But that doesn't, that doesn't change the system. That doesn't change anything. All that you're doing is trying to bail out and everybody sees it. You're trying to, you're trying to cover up what you're actually doing. You're trying to, trying to walk away from the mess you've made, Mr. Mayor. And the rest of you are going to go on and pretend that there wasn't a problem at all. You're going to say, oh, look, you know, we're dealing with racial justice. Mike Wiley's still on the street, but, but we declared a holiday, right? It's all representational. It's a smokescreen, right? And you must think the people of Lakewood are pretty stupid to not know what you're doing. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Otto Akitas.
My name's Otto Akitas. I'm the chairman of the Panther Party. You see, I say the Panther Party because recently we changed our name to the Panther Party from the White Panther Party because it's time for an evolution of power. It's time for us to come together as one people instead of just letting the wheels turn. And I kind of like what Doc was saying earlier about just covering up what's still there. Because that's exactly what's happening. It's just the wheels turning over and over again. So we've evolved to become one, to become better. And unfortunately, the City of Lakewood doesn't seem to share that same desire of evolution. There's no desire to improve. There's no desire to make better. There was a proclamation read earlier about Dr. Martin Luther King. And during that proclamation, they were beautiful words. Because they were the words that he wrote. But you all should be ashamed of yourselves for saying them. For saying those beautiful words. And letting a murderer like Mike Wiley walk the streets. Somebody who killed a man because of the color of his skin. And you speak those words. And you let him act. You give him more responsibility. And then you speak those words. This is your first day in office, Mayor Wayland. I don't remember seeing an election. But maybe that's just me. But you should be ashamed of yourself. Now that I've gotten that off my chest, let's talk about the Gary Oaks. The committee that you guys are putting together is a sham and you know it. You guys are letting the people suffer and the voice is being put forward by the builders who stand to make millions off of this so-called bill. Do better. All power to the people.
Next, there is a telephone number with an unidentified name. Please state your name and address for the record.
The last four digits of the number are 3331.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, so you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Christine Minetti of Lakewood. Oops, wait, I have to, I have an echo here. My name is Christine Minetti of Lakewood. I'd like to remind you tonight, at the start of 2022 in Mayor Wayland's tenure, about the sixth extinction that's underway. Five days ago, the World Wildlife Fund Germany warned that more than 1 million species could go extinct within the next 10 years, the largest extinction event since that of the dinosaurs. It's not just about faraway animals. It's not just about faraway animals. The WWF said decisive environmental protection policies were urgently needed, particularly in the fight against climate change. Species conservation is no longer just about defeating environmental problems, but is rather about the question of whether or not humanity will eventually become a victim of its own lifestyle. From a paper in the Proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences in America, quote, "The acceleration of the extinction crisis is certain because of the stillfast growth in human numbers and consumption rates." Our results reemphasize the extreme urgency of taking massive global actions to save humanity's crucial life support systems. Please watch Attenborough's 2020 documentary Extinction for more context. This horrifying and unthinkable emergency affects all of us, including here in Lakewood. In his 2021 book, The Nature of Oaks, Professor Talamy stresses how native oaks support more life forms than any other tree species in America. Although the consultants hired by developers here over and over insist that our Gary Oaks are dispensable, valueless, and can be cut down, that they are not being used by any wildlife, this is patently untrue. In addition to the dozens of species of lichens, moxas, and invertebrates, many of them pollinated in crisis, that use the trees, even in my neighborhood, there are numerous bird species as well. These include but are not limited to chickadees, annas, and rufus hummingbirds, pine siskins, juncos, brown creepers, finches, robins, nuthatches, tohes, owls, woodpeckers, northern flickers, golden-crowned kinglets, Johnsons warblers, starlings, crows, herons, stellas jays, scrub jays, and hawks, with eagles and various waterfowl nearby, as well as squirrels, raccoons, opossums, and coyotes. Who made the squirrels, for example, supported by the oats? These creatures will perish as their habitat is fragmented and destroyed. By allowing oaks and other trees for that matter to be cut down, you are personally contributing to the sixth extinction. The often heard argument that trees should not be protected because they make the cost of housing more expensive is irrelevant in the face of the sixth extinction. Now is not the time to think about cutting corners and making yet more money by cramming more and bigger houses onto lots where trees just get in the way. It's a time to think creatively and intelligently about how best to develop housing stock modestly and while keeping the trees, which are needed not only by the wildlife that uses them, but also by humans who benefit from their many ecosystem services. In 2022, please remember that we are in the sixth extinction and do everything in your personal and collective power to prevent the destruction of habitat and wildlife here in Lakewood. Thank you and congratulations to the new mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, James Dunlop.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is James Dunlop, and I am a resident of Lakewood. This evening, I would like to comment on the Ad-Hoc Tree Committee. I think we have to see the Ad-Hoc Tree Committee in the context of what happened in Lakewood in 2021. A group of people in Lakewood, led by Christina Manetti, woke up to the fact that the city's natural environment was being pillaged. Protections for Gary Oaks were non-existent or virtually non-existent, and the building of warehouses was leading to the mass killings of these precious trees. It seems to me that the city found the situation annoying and inconvenient and sought to give the impression that the environment was being protected and that we can, and that we can all go back to sleep. And this, I believe, is the purpose of the Ad-Hoc Tree Committee, to show that there isn't a problem and that there is no support for further tree protection. For example, the committee will include two members with expertise in real estate or development. We have already heard comments from such interests opposing further tree regulation. The Master Builders Association, who commented, are well-known for their opposition to tree regulation. And while we're on the subject, it is worth noting that the new mayor, in his 2020 bid for Pierce County Council, was endorsed by the Master Builders Association in Pierce County. We can then say that giving seats to interests profiting from real estate and development may be akin to putting murderers on the Public Safety Committee. Overall, it seems to me that the Ad-Hoc Tree Committee is potentially being stacked to support status quo. And yes, there will be members of the committee who have environmental expertise, who might support stringent tree regulations on scientific grounds. Perhaps their function is to demonstrate how fair and open-minded the city has been. This means that environmentalists who support stronger tree protections need to be careful. By being on the committee, their presence may give credibility to an eventual and possibly foregone decision to green light the continued destruction of Lakewood's natural habitat. Thank you and Happy New Year.
Next, we have Tisha Mirer Dunlop.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Tisha Mirer Dunlop, and I'll be making a comment for Helen Wagner, reading it for her. To the members of the Lakewood City Council, I am Helen Wagner of Lakewood advocating for the Gary Oaks. It has been alleged that our oak advocacy group is a special interest group. Indeed, it strikes me that any small group that tries to further a cause that one happens to find unacceptable, be it to the left or the right of one's own views, may be deemed a special interest group. However, when labels the oak cause, the trees are part of an overwhelming network of small elements that, if not respected, will spell disaster for our planet. An ad hoc committee to overhaul the present tree code has been formed ostensibly to make things better for trees, hence lessening global warming. The proposed minimum markup of that group actually has a few people who are specifically interested in trees. Since the committee has chosen to represent progress, trees or natural things in general can't stand a chance. I fear that such a group will design a code to give trees even less protection than before, rather than the respect of ecological status that they deserve. Back to special interest groups. Some of us would consider builders, contractors, and others who would like to run roughshod over our trees a special interest group, since their only goal is to make money. More buildings, more asphalt, more buildings and more asphalt equal higher temperatures. Remember last summer? Perhaps this committee would try to sell our citizens on the idea that this is what they want. This tree is on my property, so I should be able to cut it down. Meanwhile, our quality of life diminishes. Dear City Council, please consider that individual natural parts of our world, when taken together, are necessary for our lives. The Gary Oaks deserve our protection. They are too precious to waste. Thank you for your consideration, Helen Wagner. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have looks like Bunche MOD. That's probably not the full name, but please give it.
Yeah, my name is Bunche Carter. MOD stands for Minister of Defense. I'm the Minister of Defense for the Black Panther Party of Washington, and I'm a resident of Lakewood.
Mr. Carter, we can barely hear you, so if you can lean closer to your microphone, it would be helpful.
Hey, let's, let's, let's not let my time keep running while we do that. Give me a second, hold on. Can you hear me?
Much better.
All right. Can I get some of my time back? There we go. Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that, most definitely. So as I said, my name is Bunche Carter. I am the Minister of Defense of the Black Panther Party of Washington. That's what MOD stands for. Everybody that spoke tonight has been very, very well spoken, very eloquent in their defense of the Gary Oaks. So I, I don't really feel like I have a lot to say in regards to that. But I do want to say that it is very necessary that we have the Gary Oaks around. Me personally, I don't have grandchildren yet, but when I do have grandchildren, I would love for them to have a planet to run around on. I would love for my children and their, their children to still be able to stay here in Washington and it still be as beautiful of a state as it is that made me want to move here five years ago. Those are the things that, that I hope for in regards to the Gary Oaks. I know that corporate interests have a way of damaging things that are important to regular people. But I'm hoping that at some juncture, with all of the talk that I hear about the Gary Oaks on all of these city council meetings that I've attended, that at some point it'll sink in and say, hey, wait, maybe the money's not that important. Maybe the money's not that important. Because in all actuality, money has done a very good job of corrupting everything pure. Everything pure has been corrupted by money. So now, from what I'm seeing in regards to the Gary Oaks is that that's no longer, that, that's not something that's faded away with time. Money is still making it impossible for regular people to have a regular life. It's to live bountifully and fruitfully. Speaking of living bountifully and fruitfully, I want to give a nod to my brother, Otto, who spoke earlier. I find it appalling that there are citizens of Lakewood who still have to ride around on the streets and have to worry about being pulled over by Mike Wiley. That troubles me. Because see, I'm of the belief that if you do something once, it might have been an accident. If you're engaged in something more than once, it's becoming a habit. Right now, I know of two deaths of black men that Mike Wiley was involved in. Are we waiting for the third to show that it's a habit, to show that it's a cycle? Is that what we're doing? Or is it more important to protect the people who abide with your way of thinking? I can guarantee you one thing for certain, Mr. New Mayor. You would get a whole lot more support from the actual people who give you all power if you sided with the people. Mike Wiley doesn't care about me. He doesn't care about my safety. He doesn't care about the safety of anyone in my party. In fact, I'm a little scared to drive around Lakewood most nights myself because I'm afraid I might run into him. Who knows what that might turn into? Because unlike Said Joaquin, I'm not afraid. I'm not afraid. So you can't tell me you're gonna get shot, dude? And I just say, I don't want to get shot. I'm gonna say, do it then. Because at some point, somebody has to stand up to the bully and show them that bullying goes both ways. All power to the people, just for Said Joaquin.
Next, we have, I can't see very well, Rachel Mackey.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rachel Mackey. I am a resident of the city of Lakewood. And I, too, don't necessarily want to talk so much about the Gary Oaks, but I do want to say this, that putting a moratorium on the Gary Oaks is very important. I believe absolutely of that. And as my parents are my neighbors around the corner from me, my mom constantly is continually saying, you know, and they're in their seventies, saying that the most important thing, or the best thing about Lakewood is their trees. And I too believe that. I live in an area over here where there is a ton of Gary Oaks and my neighbor cut some down over the summer, and I can't tell you how much it changed the, you know, the ability to get shade and just the animals that were around that we no longer see because the trees have been cut down. Another thing that I think is really important, working in a system where, you know, officials get elected, you know, I appreciate absolutely the service that you give. And I too also agree that there's got to be a way to creatively or innovatively come up with a happy solution for everybody so that you're pleasing the people as well as, you know, pleasing, you know, others as well. But the most important group that needs to be thought of are the people because they are the ones that, essentially, that you're serving. So if you could keep that in mind when you start making decisions and creating policies. Something else that I want to mention that hasn't really been mentioned tonight or in any of the meetings that I've heard since I've come to the meetings is, as everybody knows, we have policies and procedures for a reason and why are we not enforcing some of those policies and procedures? Like, we create rules and, and then we don't follow them. It's kind of like, we're just making, it's kind of like checking boxes, right? So we do all these things and we try to do them great and yet we don't do anything really great. So how about we focus on, you know, the few things that do make the city beautiful, the trees, the people, and work really hard at making sure that those are taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just want to point out, Rachel, that you had the most clarity with your microphone of anyone. So whatever you're doing, thank you.
Sweet. Thank you.
Thank you. Very easy to hear. Thank you. Next, Eric Seibel.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Eric Seibel. I live on Poncedeleon Creek. I'm a member of the Tohoma Audubon Society and the Lakewood Gary Oaks Coalition. Thank you, all of you, for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I wanted to be sure to congratulate our council members on their achievement in being elected to serve on the city council. And I wanted to thank all of you for your many years of service. Mr. Don Anderson, thank you for your leadership, and I look forward to the tenure of Mayor Whalen and Deputy Mayor Moss. We're looking forward to a great year of working together. We are grateful in particular for the opportunity to apply for a position on the Ad-Hoc Committee for the city's tree code revision. We appreciate the city investing the resources and time to achieve an outcome that is beneficial and acceptable to our citizens. In the interim, I feel it would be appropriate to instate a moratorium on the issuing of permits for the cutting of trees in our city. I am simply asking for time to allow the process of the committee to work. And while I have your attention, I, I wanted to also thank our frontline city employees for doing everything possible to save the trees that they can. I personally would prefer that no trees are cut down, but in politics, I understand that you take what you can. I know that our city employees do try very hard and that it's a difficult and delicate situation that they strive to negotiate, balancing the rights of private ownership while protecting our commons. I appreciate what they do. I appreciate what you do under sometimes very challenging circumstances. Thank you again for the opportunity and for creating this, this very promising committee. I thank you for your time and Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Next, La sentia. You're Mortalis.
My name is La sentia Mortalis, and I'm from the city of Lakewood. I want to speak first about the Gary Oak travesty that has occurred. I call it a travesty because everything that you have done to make this an even playing ground is tragic. Your so-called committee standards are ridiculous, and you're once again taking the voice from the people on this environmental travesty. Jason Whalen was just put in the chair of mayor. So what are we going to do to change? So what are you going to do to change anything? What are you going to do for the people? Are you going to hold the so-called leaders and defenders of the city of Lakewood accountable? What are you going to do to get Mary Robnett to do her job before she is reelected this year and file charges on the murder of Said Joaquin? Or are you comfortable with her waiting until she can get past her reelection to sweep it under the table? Because that's exactly what she's doing. What are you going to do to stop the people from getting murdered in the streets? Why should we trust today will be any different than yesterday? You have very small shoes to fill, and even then, we worry. We hope you know what you're doing, Mayor Whalen, because the people will be watching. All power to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Arant is next.
Hello. My name is Cynthia Arant. I was born and raised in Lakewood, off Lake Avenue, right by Clover Park High School. I'd like to state again for the Gary Oaks that mature trees, like the Gary Oak, cannot be replaced. My children's children will not see the grandeur of a mature tree like this. Having spent my whole life in Lakewood and Pierce County, I understand the pressures of JBLM and big corporations that have come in to clearcut and warehouse Lakewood because it's so wonderfully flat. It's such a great prairie where these Gary Oaks live. I think that we need to consider creating avenues of trees, pathways, and waterways to preserve some sort of natural pathways and sustainable living conditions for the people, for the birds, for the mammals. If we cut down these trees and replace them with non-natives, as is done all over the place, it does nothing for my children's children. Gary Oaks do not need additional water. They abhor it. So irrigation isn't a problem. Keep them where they are. The shade they provide cannot be replaced. The oxygen they provide, the cooling that they provide by their water absorption and transpiration during critical heat waves like we experienced cannot be replaced. They provide food and shelter, and they are essentials. They are the lungs of Lakewood. My family, again, has been here for 125 years. I love seeing the savannas. The shapes are almost something from Dr. Seuss. They're wonderful arching rounded shapes. And I just hope, new mayor, that you are hearing the plea for these trees, for our future generations and for Lakewood to have something to be proud of. Why don't we consider them the lungs of Lakewood? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Jenna Lee.
Hello, my name is Jenna Lee. I'm a resident of Seattle and a first-year law student at the University of Washington. I'm also here to discuss the Gary Oaks and stress to the council and to the new mayor, Mr. Whalen, how important these trees are, not only to the ecosystem, but to the community surrounding them. I want to remind the council that cutting down the trees has occurred along socioeconomic lines that are inequitable with minorities and poor people being most affected and that heat waves also have a disproportionate impact based on class and race, given that not everyone has access to cool spaces. I want to echo all the statements made by people more knowledgeable about the environmental aspects than I am, that Gary Oaks are amazing at water retention, create a lot of shade because they are, they create a very big canopy when they're mature and that these trees are irreplaceable. They're not like other species that can grow in a few decades. They take hundreds of years. And they are a critical part of Lakewood that shouldn't be taken for granted or sacrificed in the eyes, for the purpose of short-term corporate gain. I want to emphasize that the voices of everyone here matters and this is what the people of Lakewood want. So please consider their voice over those of corporate interests or any real estate people who have different reasons for engaging with the trees. I also want to echo these statements made by other folks about police reform and police accountability. Please take those seriously. I've been at these meetings for months now and it, the same things keep coming up. And it doesn't feel to me that the city has taken action to resolve them because we've been talking about police accountability and environmental reform for months now. I want to echo the other statement of a tree moratorium. Until we figure out how to adequately protect these trees, especially by, by talking to people who are experts in this field and not just construction companies and so on. We need to figure out a plan to legally protect these trees. And until them, until that time comes, please put a moratorium in place so that no Gary Oaks are cut. Thank you for your time and Happy New Year and congratulations to the new mayor.
Thank you very much. Next, Judith Minetti.
Hello. Oh, hello. Can you hear me now? I'm sorry, I thought it was unmuted already. I'm reading this for Judith Minetti. She's a resident of Lakewood, so I'll read it in her voice since she wrote it. I ask you to consider the composition of the tree advisory committee. The designated environmental voices are far outweighed by other members of the committee. It is quite clear that the trees, who certainly cannot speak for themselves, will not be able to withstand the arguments of other interests. This is abbreviated from the one that she submitted by, by writing. That there could be possibly as few as only two persons who are specifically tree advocates among a group of 13 members illustrates a looming glaring and potentially very sizable disadvantage for the trees. It would seem the committee composition is skewed against the trees of Lakewood. Naturally, various representatives will speak or vote on, in their own best interests. The input from real estate professionals or land developers will likely be biased and deny giving priority to trees motivated probably by financial concerns. Homeowners associations can more or less be counted on holding the position that landowners should be free to remove from their properties any trees which are inconvenient for any number of reasons. A member of the youth council might have a sincere dedication to preserving trees, but it is likely they could be easily influenced or intimidated by older individuals whom they might consider to be more knowledgeable or whom they perceive as imposing and influential figures. There is a strong possibility that members of the committee from the CDBG eligible qualified census tracts, i.e. underprivileged neighborhoods, could also be swayed by other committee members' arguments that tree preservation makes the construction of new housing stock more expensive, thereby making housing less affordable, which would go against their own interests. I want Lakewood to value trees and assume a protective attitude towards them. This, this should be affected and reflected in the composition of the tree advisory ad hoc committee, at least half of whose members should be environmentally minded and sympathetic towards our wonderful trees in Lakewood and have an explicit interest in tree preservation. Sincerely, Judith Minetti, registered nurse retired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all of the names that appear on the screen who have raised their hand to make public comment tonight. If there are any other individuals who have yet to raise their hand to make public comment, you are more than welcome to do so. Madam Clerk, do you see any others who would like to address council during the public comment period?
Mayor Whalen, no one else has raised their virtual hand to speak this evening.
Very well, then I will declare the public comment period closed. We now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of December 8th, 2021. B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of December 13th, 2021. C, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of December 20th, 2021. D, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $2,969,229.64 for the period of November 18th, 2021 through December 17th, 2021. E, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,962,419.85 for the period of November 16th, 2021 through December 15th, 2021. F, motion number 2022-01, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Lakewood and Rotary Club of Lakewood. G, motion number 2022-02, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement for the creation and maintenance of the Puget Sound Auto Theft Task Force. H, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, planning commission meeting minutes of November 17th, 2021.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any council member wishes to remove at this time? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss and seconded by Councilmember Farmer
to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda. Unfinished business. Mr. Caulfield, do we have any unfinished business to attend to?
There is none, Mayor.
How about any new business?
Not this evening, Mayor.
Then we have yours truly reports by the city manager. Mr. Caulfield, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and congratulations, Mayor Whalen, as well as to Deputy Mayor Moss on your elections as leaders of the council. I'd like to start off first with just a Happy New Year to everybody and I look forward to a very engaging 2022. I know we have a very busy work plan. As a, as a part of that, just wanted to let you know we've been, I don't know if you know this, but Lakewood Light, Lakeview Light and Power is celebrating their 100th year of existence. And so what they would like to do is they would like this body to consider a proclamation recognizing that. The city clerk was contacted by a board member. And so if council so, and would like to do that, that's something that we can do as part of one of your March meetings. Matter of fact, to align with their specific dates, they had suggested your March 21st regular meeting. So again, if council's okay with that, we'll.
Looks like we have a consensus of heading on, so let's do that.
So I know, as you know, we had a little snow last week. It's all gone now. But I did want to recognize some key city employees for their response last week. And it was across multiple departments as, as we always operate. And, you know, our maintenance team, they just did a fantastic job, you know, beginning, you know, a couple of weekends ago with de-icing and, you know, preparing for the impending storm and the event. And our maintenance team consisting of Justin Pierce Powell, Scott Turner, Steve Byrd, Mike Nabecker, Thomas Higgins, Kenny Harris, Bob Toys, Jeff Fores, Jay Anderson, Scott Williams, the operations superintendent, and June Anguan, one of our office assistants, just did, again, an absolutely outstanding job in keeping our main arterials and our main minor arterials free and clear of the snow. In addition, our behavioral health contact team led by Officer Jessica Fitzgerald, as well as our mental health professional Carolyn Seer and our mental health therapist Zach Zebroch, who both of those two latter individuals are actually on contract from Greater Lakes Mental Health. Because of the cold and things along those lines, they actually went out and, you know, made contact with, you know, a good number of folks living in some, you know, dire straits here in Lakewood, either living on the streets or things of that matter out of their cars and such. And the good news is that they were able to get eight of them housed at the new Aspen Court over off of Hosmer, of which this body appropriated monies in partnership with Pierce County and Tacoma to be able to acquire in, in, in December. Unfortunately, one of those eight have already left, but again, seven are taking advantage of that. However, there were another 10 folks who were contacted, who at this point in time have declined to take advantage of that, of those services. But again, our behavioral health contact team, you know, is regularly out there making contact with them and hopefully, and over some time, we can convince them to be able to take advantage of, of this resource. Some good news to report from Association of Washington Cities. We learned once again that the city is going to be receiving a refund check totaling over $117,000 from our retro program, which is our injury prevention and safety program. And again, this is based on the positive way in terms of how we manage our employee safety, quite frankly. And this is the third year in a row that we will have received a refund check and that comes through the retro program via the state LNI department that oversees employee safety. And I'd also like to recognize one of our human resources analysts, Kat St. Pierre, who's been coordinating this. And quite frankly, she's been, you know, I think the reason why we have become a safer place to work is because of Ms. St. Pierre's work with, with our department directors and all staff. Also, the amount of money that the city is getting back has actually increased over the last three years. And it started off at $51,000 two years ago, rising to $77,000 and now we're at $117,000. So again, very, very positive reflection on Ms. St. Pierre as well as our department directors and all of our, all of our staff. Permit PALS, this is a great partnership that the city has fostered with Pierce County. And this is our new online permitting system. It officially launched today. We actually had a soft opening during fourth quarter of last year to kind of work out some bugs. And it went online and so it's available to everybody. We have now fully transitioned from our old quote unquote Eden system to the county's Permit PALS system. The benefit of this program is that it's, it's something that's tried and true. Pierce County has had this in place for a good number of years. It gets rave reviews from the development community in terms of its ease and the ability to process your permit or your inspection or whatever it is within the development services world that you would like to undertake. Do want to recognize our planning manager, Courtney Brunel, who has been spearheading this for the city for the last two years to get this up and running. And as a side note, the county actually introduced a new online feature, a chat feature. And they too launched theirs. And so we figured, oh, what the heck, we'll launch it. But so just after one day, we have found it to be very, very popular. And so now we're kind of a little bit on our heels a little bit to try and figure out, okay, how are we going to manage all of these chat conversations? But that's a good problem to have. That's not a, that's not a negative thing. That's a good problem to have. But again, I'd just like to compliment Ms. Brunel and her team for all the work that, that they have done here. And also express our appreciation to Pierce County for their leadership and working with us to make this come to fruition. You know, we've closed out 2021. We're still have, we're still working on our financials for 2021. And as you heard through, you know, the third quarter financial report last month, you know, the city is doing very, very well financially. We do expect that to continue through the end of the year based on where we are with revenue collections year to date, as well as where we are in terms of our operating expenditures. And really what I'm talking about here is, is our general fund. At the same time, as you know, one of, one of the reasons that we have been so successful is because we have good, strong financial policies and we follow them and we don't deviate them. And also as a part of that is that we're very proactive of looking into the future and identifying, you know, certain issues that may be a positive or more importantly, may be a negative. And no, things are going really well right now from a financial perspective. But at the same time, you know, you know, we see a three-headed monster out there kind of coming right at us. And it is creating some uncertainty and quite frankly, some nervousness on, on, on my part. Where it will go, I don't know. But really, you know, that three-headed monster, you know, is just the ongoing pandemic, you know, the COVID. You know, this time last year, we were all saying, okay, this time next year, this will all be behind us. It will be in the rearview mirror and this, that and the other thing. That is not the case, right? That's one. The other is this continued issue of supply chain issues. And I know there's talk about out there that that's not the case. There are no supply chain issues. I can tell you in terms of talking to our department directors and our frontline staff, just from an organizational standpoint, there are supply chain issues out there. There are certain things that we just can't get as quickly as we have in the past. And not just as quickly, but the wait is pretty significant as well. And then quite frankly, all you have to do is walk into any retail store and, and, and look at the shelves and that will, that will also, you know, show some empirical evidence of some of the supply chain issues that are out there. So that's a second one. And then the last one is just the millions, the millions of jobs that are just unfilled out there, particularly in the trucking industry and other in key industries, retail, restaurants, things along those lines. And, you know, you put all those together and it just creates a level of uncertainty. I'm not trying to be doom and gloom here or anything, but I'm just wanting to let you know as we look at managing our finances, we are proactive. And those are three pretty big items that we do have concerns at. Again, at this point in time, we are expecting our fourth quarter financial report to be very, very positive. We expect to end on a very, very positive note for 2021. At the same time, as we get into 2022, we'll see where we are in first quarter. And hopefully, you know, none of these items will have, you know, you know, exposed its ugly head and created any problems or challenges. But these are some concerns and issues that we have. And I just wanted to make you aware that, that, that we are taking that into account as we manage our, manage our resources. And then I think, you know, just from a calendar standpoint, the Puget Sound Regional Council is having a new elected officials workshop. At this point in time, it's expected to be a virtual event. It's scheduled for January 21st. It's, it's actually, if you've never attended, I attended it a number of years ago. If you haven't attended it, I would certainly recommend you do that. And so as soon as we have an official time, we'll be sure to send that out to you. I know PSRC said that we're going to be reaching out to us to let you all know that. But that's the kind of an upcoming calendar item that we have for you as we look out into the latter part of January. So with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Caulfield. Any questions of the city manager? Well, please extend our thank you to the Public Works and Park staff for keeping the roads and byways clear for residents. We had a few interesting days for sure, but I think everyone made it through pretty well. Thank you very much for that.
Actually, Mayor, I'd also like to recognize Jim Karprieva, our communications manager for his role in keeping the community updated of what was going on in terms of what the city was doing and then what we were hearing from the powers that be.
We appreciate it.
The world of meteorology.
He gave me the idea of a ride along in a snow cloud. He gave me the idea of a ride-along in a snowplow or brine truck. So that sounds like a new opportunity. Very good. Well, if we don't have any other information or questions, the city manager will flow into city council comments, and I'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor Wayland, and congratulations to you and to Deputy Mayor Moss. And Happy New Year to everyone. And I just wanted to echo those same comments about, thank you to Jim for your great communication that you got out to the residents, really appreciate that. And also to the rest of the city staff, Public Works, Parks, Police, everybody who is out there, just in that cold. I was dealing with it on my other thing, so it was a lot, was a lot. So I appreciate all of your guys' help on that. And then I'm just looking forward to 2022 and all of the wonderful things that we're going to do. And I'm excited to be a part of the council. And so that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Farmer.
Congratulations, Mayor Wayland and Deputy Mayor Moss. And thank you to Mr. Anderson for, it just sounds weird to say Mr. Anderson, especially since I'm re-watching The Matrix, and I can say it, Mr. Anderson. No, okay, maybe not. Seriously, thank you so much for your years of service to the city of Lakewood, and I very much appreciate everything that you've done. And I'm happy that I've been able to serve with you for these last couple of years. I too wanted to give my thanks to city staff for the work that they did for the snow and ice, and also for the work that all of the team members did to try and connect with the homeless and move them to various shelters, in particular Aspen Court. And I'm super pleased that they turned that around so quickly and got it open. Some things move at the speed of government, and I wasn't actually expecting it to be turnkey so quickly. So I'm happy to hear about that. I also wanted to mention that the South Sound Housing Partnership manager position is still open, and the first review is happening on January 12th. So if you know of anybody who's interested in that position or would be qualified, I would encourage them to apply. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Councilmember Bokey.
Thank you very much, Mayor Wayland. And, you know, I want to add, thank you very much, Councilmember Anderson, for all your work these years and your steady hand in that position. I think, well, except for one year, I think you've been mayor for the entire time I've been here. And you've done a very nice job, and you've kind of guided the ship in, and I think, some very exciting years and a lot of really exciting projects and really moving this city forward over the last eight years or so. A lot of good news, I think, in that reported to the city manager. I hope PALS Plus works out as well as I think myself and a lot of other people were hoping that it would. It's something that we've talked about for a long time. And I appreciate the work of staff and really sticking with it, because when I say it's a long time, it's been several years since we first discussed that and decided to go forward with it. So I'm hoping that it pays dividends for this community going forward. I do want to say kudos to the staff for keeping the roads clear. And the communication was good, because I think it was clear from the very beginning that certain streets were going to get a lot of attention, other streets weren't going to get much attention at all, right? Or, and I live in a cul-de-sac, and so I knew because of communication that, and I didn't expect that anybody would show up. So I think that the communication levels were very good. And I really do appreciate the work of the staff, given that we don't have a, really a snowplow department, right? This is not something that occurs every year. We don't have a huge budget towards it. So really, when we say they did a good job, they did a good job in a situation where they planned for it, but they don't even have to do it every year. And so I think, in my mind, it would be appropriate to bring at some future date the group of people so that we could honor them publicly for their efforts. So that's something we may want to consider. And I would also say the planning commission is on Wednesday night, and almost all the work is on a couple of items. Unfinished business would be the energy and climate change three-year implementation plan. As they work their way through that, and that'll eventually end up on our desk. And then a review of their 2022 work plans. So they're getting right at it here this first week of January. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm looking forward to beginning a productive year and moving forward. As has been said, there are a variety of areas in which we have work to do. And I'm looking forward to working with everyone in that, with the staff to be able to get there. I would note that on our consent agenda today, we had motion 2022-01. And one of the elements in that had to do with the noting that the, our policy regarding naming of things was likely to be revised, and I think we've talked about it. And I think we should be looking at next week, as we begin discussing the work plans for the various committees, to take a look at getting one of our advisory committees put a task to give us a recommendation as to how we should modify that or to make efficiencies that we found in the first time we tried to use that process that emerged better. And I'm, for me, I think, you know, naming something for someone is preserving their place in the heritage of the city and is creating a place as a landmark, and that maybe it's, you know, the landmarks inherited committee that might best be the one to do that, but we should make sure that we assign that to someone. And lastly, I guess I would say that, you know, every year, we nominate someone for the AWC Quality Community Scholarship. And we have, as a group, partnered with the Lions Club to also support a scholarship for that nominee, even though some of them have all gone on and gotten the state level ones to do that. And I guess I'd report that our scholarship recipient last year is enrolled in Columbia University in New York and has received that scholarship. But to the extent that any of you wish to donate, you know, our goal is to come up with $250 to be matched by the Lions Club for a $500 scholarship. So I'd be glad to accept any contributions towards that over the next month.
Great. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Already enjoying the back bench. Congratulations, Mayor Wayland, Deputy Mayor Moss. City's in good hands. I appreciated the opportunity to nominate you, and I hope to see great things from a very close distance. And thank you to those of you who rendered some kind words in my regard. Special thanks for, during the nine years I have served as mayor, to the city staff and current city manager for doing all they can to prop me up and make me look good. It's a tough job, but they've done a remarkable job of moving things along in the city and carrying out the council's will. And it's been most appreciated. The, I was reminded, as our Boston-born-and-bread city manager orchestrated the reconfiguration of our snow response over the last couple of years and how it worked well, that I was, geez, what, maybe two months ago, driving down the freeway between Boston and Cape Cod, and it was going back and forth, and so we were touring around there. And the electronic signs on the freeway did not say, you know, wear a mask, fight COVID, get your vaccine. They all said, we need snowplow drivers. And they were hurt, and we didn't even hire a snowplow driver. And we looked good. So thanks for working that out. I'm also reminded that this is, I think this is the time, since all the coast about two years, every two years, when we relook at council assignments. And so you might want to get a list of those so that we can make some equitable divisions. And then I would note that although Jason and I have been friends and partners for a long time, we're very closely together, that there is a great philosophical shift here in the change of offices. In his comments, he mentioned missing reality shows. Now, there's a lot of things that we miss due to council duties, a lot of family time. I have never missed seeing who got the rose or who got voted off the island, but I missed 14 years of Monday Night Football. So I have another couple of years of Monday Night Football to miss. But, so, but you can bring me up to speed on the rose. That's all.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks to my colleagues for voting me in as your deputy mayor. I'm honored to serve. Congratulations. And first of all, I want to say, I want to share with the group that many comments came in to me in reference to the condition of the roads in Lakewood. And I just wanted to make sure that I shared that, because they said, make sure you know that Lakewood had the cleanest roads for the snow that we've gone through. So thanks to the staff and our communications manager. Congratulations on our third year of receiving the refund. I think that speaks volume to our staff and the choices that our city manager has made. And let's see, I am excited to serve with you guys for, even though I've been here 12 years, it's just like I've just begun. So thank you, and I'm looking forward to serving another year with you guys. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I gave my thank yous at the beginning of my comments after the swearing-in, but I did, I was remiss in thanking Mr. Caulfield and the executive leadership team for many, many years of fine service. And as Dawn indicated, you prop us up and make us look good. And hopefully, you make us look good, because we've had some fumbling way of making decent policy along the way that you've executed on. So we hope that we're all pushing the ball forward collectively for the benefit of the residents. So thank you for that and for your incredible time to us in helping make things happen. So I just wanted to reiterate, thank you for the staff efforts for the snow and ice removal. I think it went really well, as well as could be expected. The Aspen Court work, I thought, was pretty fantastic. And I personally would like to get a tour of that, if we can get an opportunity for a few of us to go over and take a look at the facility and see what our invested dollars look like and how that's playing out. That would be appreciated. So I would look forward to that. I agree on the comment on the citizen advisory boards and committees. We need to kind of reshuffle the deck for our participation as the council liaisons on those various boards, or at least take a look at it. And then we're probably in line for a spring retreat, or maybe earlier than spring, unless Groundhog sees a shadow. But it would be nice to kind of do that sooner than later, if we can come up with the time to get together, maybe later in January or February. I think that might work for us. If we can do that, we typically do, try to get together a council retreat. And other than, again, a general thank you, I just want to thank the public for being present tonight with the comments. I think we all do appreciate good constructive feedback, but I do have a few comments to the commenters on the ad hoc committee. I think it's important for those who are giving us public comment and feedback that folks recognize that the ad hoc committee is designed to make recommendations to this body. This body will make the final decision on any changes to the tree preservation code or any other code that comes to the city. We will make the final decision. And I think it's also clear, and I hope that none of you missed it during the many meetings you've attended, that this body wants to hear from a diversity of voices. And that was the genesis for the makeup of the committee. Because we have learned, working collaboratively as team members, not just on this dais, but with also other citizen advisory boards and committees, that a diversity of voices makes for a stronger outcome of public policy decisions. And so we really hope, at least I really hope, that you give the process a chance, that you don't prejudge and determine failure in lieu of hopeful outcomes for success. Because we believe that the many voices will work together, and you will bring your best efforts to make good policy decisions as a group, and that's what we expect of you. So those of you who are going to apply to be on the committee, I thank you. But I also thank you in advance for being open-minded and working in good faith to bring forth the best of what you have to offer, not to predetermine ill intent or profit motivation, or that someone might have a weak inclination or be swayed by louder voices in the room, because all voices are going to matter. So I just wanted to leave you with that thought and look forward to your applications. Are there any other questions? If not, we're adjourned. Oh. First faux pas. We're going to recess, according to my script, into executive session for approximately 20 minutes pursuant to RCW 4231101G to review the performance of a public employee. City council is not expected to take action following the executive session, other than to adjourn the meeting, as I just attempted to do prematurely. So we will be in recess. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. It's just so hard to breathe. Say again? Yes? It's just so hard to breathe. Say again? Yes?
No, thank you.
No, absolutely. Thank you. Even I was only...